Part of this, I really thank the Board of Realtors for including me because this is, this is important matters that we have up here with local elections like school board and city council. The forum is named after Mark Farden. Again, I think most of you know who Mark was and he was such a, especially when it comes to city issues, he could tell us all what we needed to know as far as zoning and everything else that's happening in this community. And we miss him dearly, but glad that we have to remember him to this candidate forum. So come April 4th, if you live in the first ward or if you live in the fifth ward, you'll be electing a city council representative. You'll see that we have three persons at the front tables now. There are actually four who are going to be on the ballots, two for each ward. Pat Fowler is in Ward One. She is the incumbent and she is not able to be here tonight because of work obligations, but we still will continue to present her opponent and have him in this particular forum to be able to answer our questions. And then we have both candidates for Ward Five, Donald Waterman and Greg Bush. And we appreciate them being here. We're going to do this similar to the way that we did the school board candidates. We will have each candidate do a two-minute introduction and then we will go to questions. The Board of Realtors have a list of questions and I will try to get all those in best I can and then maybe add some follow-ups or add some of my own. And then we'll maybe have time for questions that would come from the audience. We're going to limit this to 90 minutes. If we go that far, fine. If everybody passes over from exhaustion before then, then we will not go that distance. Or I shouldn't say that. I don't think anybody's going to do that. But if we all pop ourselves out and we just will say that's it for the night, because I think they'll have another one or two forums before they are through the election on April 4th. So again, welcome. Thank you for being here. We'll have a two-minute opening comment. I think I'll start with Nick Cano, closest to me, and we'll go that way on these opening comments. Nick?
Thank you, David, and to the Board of Realtors for hosting the first of what I'm sure will be the candid forums between now and the April 4th election. My name is Nick. I'm running for the first ward council seat. Originally from the St. Louis area where I was born and raised by a single mother as the youngest of three children. From my childhood, I know intimately what it's like to be evicted, to experience food insecurity, and to not necessarily know how you're going to make it through anything, let alone the cold of that heat, which is very timely given our weather forecast here. Through the fortune of a public education made up of teachers who believed in me and even went so far as to pay my college application fees, I not only graduated high school, but went on to Mizzou as a student where I earned my degrees and ultimately settled down here in Columbia. Since then, I now work for the, for a national nonprofit as the Mid-Missouri Regional Director. But outside of work, I have the honor of serving on the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club of Columbia. In addition to that, I have served on over a half dozen local boards and commissions, including the Housing and Community Development Commission, the Board for the Family Access Center of Excellence, and the Bicep Confession Commission. I'm running to represent the first ward because as a resident, I've seen firsthand how often our issue and our challenge is an opportunity to overlook and how rarely a plan or an opportunity to present a path forward, an effective path, has been offered that includes everyone at the table. I believe that progress requires more than finger pointing and that highlighting a problem is only the first step in solving it. Taking responsibility and ensuring that everyone has a seat at the table, even when we disagree, is key to addressing Columbia's diverse needs and bringing actual improvements to the first ward that are long overdue. Again, my name is Nick Cano. I'm running for the first ward council seat and I'm looking forward to the questions.
Thank you. Ward Five, current council person decided not to run, so we will have a new council person from Ward Five. Donald Waterman, your opening comment.
Thank you, David, and thank you to the Columbia Board of Realtors. My name is Don Waterman. Real quick history, grew up Northeast Missouri dairy farm, so I understand hard work, work ethic. Out of high school, I joined the Navy, made a career out of it, 24 years active duty, retired in 2001, moved to Columbia, looking for work after my retirement. Works began working at the university. Several different positions there, finished up as a computer trainer. Joined that, left in 2010 to go to Chicago. I got a graduate degree in mental health counseling, moved back here, went to work for Bass Pro, and now I currently work at American Outdoor Brands out over at Z. American Outdoor Brands, real quick, we manufacture about 20 different brands, outdoor accessories for the shooting, hunting, fishing, outdoor camping, outdoor lifestyle. Married, my wife is a retired Columbia Public School teacher. We were married while I was in grad school, one of the reasons I came back here. Mental health is an issue for me. It was an issue when I ran in 2016. I ran for the 46th District for the Missouri House. So mental health is something that I care about. So the other reason is we, I'm running to represent the fifth ward is part of it is simply because it was getting late, the filing process, no one seemed to have stepped up. So I decided that, why not? Why not send me? So I stepped up, got on the ballot. Basically, I'm looking to make sure that the development, because in the fifth ward, there's a lot of development going on, making sure that it's done and done well so that everyone can travel and get around. In the fifth ward, so would be more to the questions.
Thank you. Greg Bush, welcome, and your opening comment, please.
Thank you, David, and Jamie, for having us. I'm probably not known very well here in the room, so I'll give you a little bit of my CV. Here, Columbia in 2006, I graduated from Sinclair School of Nursing in 2012. I'm an R and M by trade. I went through the accelerated program at Sinclair School, which means I already had a college degree. I had a college degree, an art degree from Illinois Wesleyan, 1998. I was such a good artist, I had to become a nurse because I wanted to pay bills and eat and be dry and warm. Right after that, I, right after graduating from nursing school in 2012, I became an acute care medicine nurse. Worked my way up through that for a little bit of time, charge nurse, shift supervisor, and now I'm a coordinator for patient education, professional development, in the Office of Professional Practice. Patient education is important because it's about health literacy, making sure that our patients stay out of our hospital. Again, I come from the acute care world. And then professional development, because I like to identify individuals, grow them personally for the sake of themselves and their families and their future, for the sake of the institution, for exceptional nurses going forward. And I'll yield back to Don some more time.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'm not sure any of you were here at the beginning of the previous forum when we had the school board candidates, so maybe this will be a surprise question to you. And it's the first one I ask now, because what happened at the diversity breakfast last Thursday was the meant that the city, as well as the school, has been the target of criticism because of what happened at that particular event. So my question, the way I worded it a while ago is, and we'll start with Nick Cano on this one, what is your reaction to the reactions of the event that was the Martin Luther King Jr. Diversity Breakfast from last week?
Yeah, I wish I could have been there, because it sounded like a very interesting, exciting opportunity. I think the issue overall has been far and away overblown beyond anything that actually matches me up. You know, could communication have been better with parents, the answer, or to constituents? And the answer to that is always yes. Communication should always be improved and can always be improved. But as for any of the, you know, the hateful speeches been used around the performance that was given, I think it's been far and away overblown. And that's my opinion on it.
Okay. We'll go to Donald Waterman on this one also. And again, I feel it's an appropriate question because the mayor has received letters on this and the city council persons also are included in some of the criticism of what happened there. Your reaction to the event?
I have to agree with Nick. I think some of it has been overblown. I know there's been some questions back and forth about how much Columbia Public Schools knew and communicated to the parents before the event. I've heard that it was readily available, but they didn't. I don't know the full story yet. I wasn't there. So I'm waiting to hear a little more about it, but I do have to agree with Nick. I think some of it has been overblown, which serves nobody. It's time to have a discussion. Let's just talk about it, find out. And there's nothing wrong with the diversity. I think the breakfast itself has been going on for years. I think it's a wonderful thing. I know there's, it seems like there was just simply one segment of it that has caused all the issue. So again, I'm looking to get a little more information about who knew what when, so to speak, and that's it.
All right. Thank you. Greg Bush, same question?
So to be clear, there was an event, there was a reaction, and there was a reaction to the
I'm curious just about when you heard what happened.
Yes.
How did you react? What was your, what were your thoughts?
About the event?
Yeah, about the controversy and all of the criticism and everything else that has occurred since then.
I'm not impressed with it. I'm just not, it's a lot of noise. Number one, it's not a Ward Five issue. I'm not even a Ward Five, but I'll tell you what my heart is. Okay. I was not there. I saw stills. I had friends that were there. There is no controversy except for a hand. So these people have their controversies, their desires and their wants, and they contact the governor and our state senator over men dancing. Okay. My art degree is a theater art degree. I have been in costuming in front of people. Not impressed with the place.
I'm going to do a follow-up here. And let's say that you are elected to the city council, and I'll start with Nick Cano again, since this is a follow-up to this question. When next year's planning for the diversity breakfast occurs, and the only reason that this is, I think, an appropriate subject for council persons is because the city's name is, and they sponsor this, it's a city event. So when this comes up and you're in a meeting with other council persons and city staff, what would you hope would have been learned from this year?
You know, I think my first question would be, what can we do to improve our communication on the, you know, agenda for the event? Because again, to me, it comes back to that. If that's the only perhaps real issue at hand is, because again, it can always be a critique, is that there was a lack perhaps of communication. And so that would be my reaction in the future is, let's not give anyone excuse to question being informed on what they are going to or sending their kids to or coming to in any way should perform, to the extent possible, because people can always somehow still be uninformed.
Donald Waterman, same question to you. You're elected, planning is coming up, and you're going to say, here's what we need to do to avoid anything like this this next time.
Again, I think I have to agree with Nick that, one, make sure that it's communicated fully to everyone. The other thing is, in the issue of trying to be inclusive, we can be inclusive without being confrontational. And that's why I would want to make sure that whatever the program is, that we look at it, yes, we're inclusive. And I actually think that a lot of this controversy has actually pulled away from what the purpose of the diversity breakfast was, and that's to celebrate Dr. King.
Okay. Greg Bush, same question to you.
There is nothing controversial that happened at this breakfast. I wasn't there. I see stills. This is completely fabricated. Now, the question is, if a constituency, a constituent came to me and had some thoughts and said, hey, I want to share my opinion with you. Okay, I can listen. But the reality is, is that there have been people around, I've been to the Little Rain Hotel, and there are, there are letters to the editor from the 1950s, saying, my children will never sit next to an insert and we're here as long as I live. That is the worst thing that could happen to my child. There is no controversy.
Let's go to the next question. And this is one that I think you'll say, okay, this is something I can see dealing with that will be important. Donald Waterman, you'll be first on this. We've been talking about a solution to affordable housing in Columbia for many years. Now we're dealing with home shortages at all price ranges and rentals. How would you help create additional housing in Columbia?
Creating additional housing in Columbia, are we talking about across the board? Or are we talking about specifically affordable housing?
I would say probably all kinds of housing, because I think the Board of Realtors is concerned with every price range.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I think what we need to, to help build Columbia, I firmly believe that development is necessary. Now, should it be done well? Should it be done reasonably? Should it be done appropriately, economically, environmentally friendly, whatever you want to use? Yes, and all of that. But development is necessary. On the, if you want to say for the fifth ward, we've got the development that's going on Sinclair Road. So make sure that that's done. Make sure the infrastructure is in place. Make sure that the roads, there's under the plans there for widening from iPhone to four lanes all the way down. So make sure that that is done as quickly as possible, if not concurrent with the development. As far as for more affordable housing, maybe we can take a look at internally in downtown, some of the other wards, whether it's renovation, or we can work on maybe some multifamily dwellings. There's, there's a lot of different options that I think we can take a look at and discuss. I don't think there's any one cookie cutter approach.
Greg Bush, same question to you about dealing with home shortages in all price ranges and rentals? And is there a way that you would suggest we can create additional housing in Columbia?
So the reason why there's a home shortage is because so many people want to move here, because Columbia is just a gem. That's why. I think we need to continue to develop public and private partnerships with mixed-use housing, maybe areas of condos where you have owners of their homes in an association that will kind of manage some of the other things, some of the snow removal and some of the lawn care. And then we need homeownership. Again, of all different brackets, there can be more apartment buildings. There can be, there can be more, and the reason why, remember the reason why, is because people want to come to Columbia. So public-private partnerships, making sure that our infrastructure is for five months from now, five years from now, five decades from now, as we continue to grow. And I don't see Columbia shrinking. I think Columbia's going to continue to grow because we are drawing talent. We are drawing the best from around all of us up here. We're drawing up there. We're drawing the best to Columbia. So those are, that's the way I would do it.
And we'll go to Nick Cano on this question.
So the key to refreshing affordable housing is more access, right? That's at the end of the day. That's the only way you fix affordable housing. And the first ward is a wonderful metropoism of a lot of challenges in Columbia and especially affordable housing. We have everything from houses that you can get for under six figures to houses that are a half a million dollars above. But we need to do everything, all of the above, and we need to address and create programs to help refurbish and incentivize the rehabilitation of dilapidated housing in the first ward that benefit, you know, if you build as well. And those touched on planning zoning issues where even planning zoning staff admit that the process for anyone from individual to developer is arduous and could be streamlined. But we need all of the above. There's not much in the first ward in terms of someone going to build a new subdivision. But a lot of rehab needs to be done, a lot of opportunities there. And I think a key tool that we do not currently have in our toolbox that would benefit Columbia is a community land bank that could be done in partnership with the city and the county even, among some other private agencies as well, to help subsidize the development of affordable housing, which is, in my opinion, the most effective path forward.
I appreciate you ending with that. I just want to follow up with this, and it's one suggested by the Board's Questions, but if I am a builder, I say affordable housing, it's not something that I, I will do because it just doesn't pay. It's hard to, hard to do affordable housing and I think make enough from building that kind of housing. So I want to make sure that everybody's hearing what you say. We go to Don Waterman first. So what is the affordable housing solution? Is it public-private? Is it subsidizing? What do you see? What would you stand for as a city council person when it comes to that particular issue?
I think both of those are issues or ideas that can certainly be looked at, maybe melded together. Again, it's, there's a broad, there's a broad range. And again, I don't think there's any one answer. Yes, is it renovation? Is it taking some existing, maybe some existing structures, turning them into multi-use, multifamily dwellings, apartments? I know that there, there've been a lot of new apartment complexes that have gone up around, around the town. You know, can we continue to develop those? I think it's finding the developer. Yes, not all developers want to do it because of the profit or profit margins that may be involved, but those developers are out there that are willing to do it. So it's, it's finding those and utilizing those developers and coming up, there, there's a way forward. I don't have a specific answer to that.
Greg Bush, you brought up public-private partnerships. You'll probably want to expand on that. But how far does the city go on that?
Well, the city can, there's, there's only so much that a city can do. There, we need builders to build things that are not just for students. All of the apartment buildings and things that have gone, none of them have gone up like in Ward Five with respect to that. So what I see for a future of Columbia is where we have a workforce that can afford some of the nicer homes as well, some of the single-family homes, some condos, quadplexes, duplexes, those kinds of things. And if there is a developer that says, hey, I'm not going to be able to do this for whatever reason, it's just not going to be profitable enough, I will suggest we can find somebody else who will do that. They've just created a, a place in the marketplace for a demand for a developer that can do the kinds of things that we need for them to do. So this is, as a city council person, this is looking at zoning, making sure that we have infrastructure in place so that our sewer, again, five months from now, five years from now, five decades from now. These are the kinds of things that we will need to do and maintain that strong, resilient, local tone.
Nick Cano, a follow-up to you. You mentioned land banks. I think the city does have a program right now, doesn't it, where some houses are being built, city owns the land, and the person who is going to get the house is the land trust.
Yeah. So the land trust is a great example of something that is working very hard to help address affordable housing. But with the Key Land Trust, or Habitat for Humanity, or Jobpoint, whoever it may be, or the Housing Authority that is building projects, no one actor can address the issue alone. And that goes back to my point in my opening, in my opening statement of, we need everybody at the table in order to address a lot of these larger challenges in our community. And as such, to the first ward, we have a dire need for infill. I mean, I could, there's no shortage of empty lots. And one of the challenges there, again, is planning zoning that makes it, that starts out with a good purpose, but makes it very arduous to accomplish something like building cottage-style housing or things like that to increase density in there and in the fourth housing. I can tell you just on, you know, I live on Oak Street, and there's at least six or seven lots within a block of my house, that I'd love to see houses built, whether from a land trust or an individual or a developer. And that reaches my point, that's more overall of our city, is that we have a lot of sticks on the city government side. We don't have a lot of carrots in terms of encouraging a true affordable housing development, whether it's in the first ward or citywide. We've done a really great job on six. We can really penalize people for everything under the sun, I would imagine at this point. But we really need to incentivize both individuals and developers and nonprofits and everyone, again, at the table to lean in and tell us what do they need, what would it take to get them to really start building, both in the first ward and the infill, but also citywide.
Greg Bush gets this question first. This is one we already discussed till we're all in the grave a long time. The city is getting feedback on a roll cart trash. How would you change the current trash and recycling service, or would you privatize it?
Oh, no, no privatization. No.
Hey, I'm just reading.
I'm not taking it personal. I don't want to take it personal. Look, the, I didn't think this was going to be like that. Really, with respect to roll carts and, you know, solid waste, there's a lot of different players at stake. Some of them are the employees of sanitation, that we need to make sure that they continue to be safe, that they have a safe workspace. When I moved here in 2006, I had never heard of a trash bag voucher system before, but alas, okay, this is how we do things here in Columbia. I can adapt and learn. But I think that has gone by the wayside. I don't think that that is sustainable. And it is not sustainable. So what's next? A rolling trash can might be it. But the reality is that some people have built their whole lives around these trash bags, their whole way of doing things. They have, they have a house that is certain distance from the curb, and they have some real concerns about a roll cart. Well, let's make sure that those people that have those concerns are actually, we address them as neighbors, as friends, as, as helpers, because we, they are our neighbors and we need to help them. So whatever happens, I think we have to be resilient. And I think I'm here to do too.
Nick Cano, your reaction or response to the question, how would you change the current trash and recycling service, or should it be privatized?
Great topic. I feel like it's been going on for like 20 years or more now, something of that nature. Well, first of all, it shouldn't be privatized. And we have a great staff that's more capable of handling it. Should be transitioned to a roll cart system, which I will go on the record and say, I am in favor of that transition. To me, it comes down to smart policy and smart government. Is it perfect? No. I mean, any policy that the city will ever do is going to have errors and struggles, whether it's, you know, to Greg's point of somebody, oh, it doesn't, I don't have room for it, which is a serious concern. The first ward with lots and houses can be much smaller. Or I'm an older person, maybe I struggle with it, or I have disability. Fortunately, we have programs already in existence for those folks to get support from the city to roll their cart out for any reason. And again, it's smart policy. We need to both protect our workers from continuing worker compensation issues, but they're getting hurt on the job and nobody wants that, and increase the efficiency of our system, which is currently bleeding money and incredibly inefficient. And I don't think anyone in City Hall or in this room or anywhere would disagree with that statement.
And Donald Waterman, your last on the roll cart, the final word on this.
I have to agree. I'm in favor of roll carts. I think that, as Greg said, when I first moved here 20 years ago, I was in the same boat. It's like, we're still using plain trash bags? Okay. As far as the question about privatization, I would say it's not completely off the table for me. Take a look at it, evaluate it. Nick just said that the current system is bleeding. Is that an option? Let's take a look at that. But the roll carts, I think the city, I think it was plain. I went to one of the open forums that they had a couple of weeks ago about the trash issue. And from the questions that were there, questions that were on the survey, I think it's pretty clear the city's already made up its mind going to roll carts, which I support. I fully agree.
We're going to move to Nick Cano on this, and the question has to do with crime in Columbia. How would you improve public safety?
That's a great question. So I think public safety overall deserves a few things, which is, it deserves to be well-funded, it deserves to be well-resourced and well-staffed. At the end of the day, it needs to be very effectively held accountable. And what that means differs to a lot of people. And again, I'm, and I'm sure it won't be the last time I'm going to go back to my point of needing everyone at the table to address the public safety issues, everything which includes the fire and EMS. Nobody wants to be in an emergency, whatever it may be, and call 911 and be put on hold, or to, if it takes longer than it could humanly, it could humanly take to get from wherever the person is, whether it's fire or police or EMS, to where they were to be happening. That, that is just, I believe, an objectively true statement, that we all want that when we call 911. Now, there are certainly issues within our public safety and certainly issues within communities, whether it have a lack of trust with certain public safety departments. But again, we're never going to address those issues and find some type of compromise, some type of path forward if we're not bringing everyone to the table, even when we disagree.
Donald Waterman, your thoughts about crime in Columbia and how would you improve public safety?
My anecdotal impression, I know that there've been statistics that it's about the same, but my anecdotal impression is that crime has gotten worse in the 20 years that I've lived. that I've lived here. We all, the three of us, there was a briefing from, from the city manager and a number of departments this past Saturday, just information, general information for us. But one of the things they mentioned was that we're currently, I believe it's 21 police officers short and there's another, I think 20, 21 scheduled to retire within the next five years or eligible to retire. So that's something that needs to be addressed, whether it's salary, whether it's working environment. But I think that that's something, we're not going to get safer with fewer officers on the streets. So we need to, we need to build the police force. Now, as far as accountability goes, yes, they should all be held accountable. They are being held accountable. How, how that's done, maybe we may disagree, but we, they are being held accountable. Bad police officers have no business wearing a badge, wearing a uniform. They need to be weeded out. So it would be incumbent upon the police department, but the citizens could also make sure that if they see an officer acting inappropriately, report. Let it be addressed, let it be looked at. Police department should obviously police from within as well. And I'm, I'm reasonably confident that they do. So I think that that's what we need to work on is getting the police force back to full strength, which is going to go a long way towards making us safer and being that gem that we think Columbia is.
Greg Bush? Public safety is a lot more than people that are armed on our streets wearing badges. Fire, response, EMS, people having emergencies, people in distress. Someone who's in distress does not need an armed response.
Standing on, how does crime decrease? We know how crime decreases. There's people that study it at the university. Increase economic opportunity, making sure that people have access to clean air, clean water, food, education, and know their neighbors. My first house when I moved here was in the first ward and I got to know my neighbors in the first ward because I wanted to know, I wanted them to know who I was so they could know who I was not and would know if somebody is not me around my house. That is what creates public safety, a community of neighbors, a community of helpers. There was a University of Missouri student that was, that crime was solved without firing a shot. We do not need armed people on our streets to keep us safe. We need to know our neighbors.
Let me do a follow-up question on this. And it's hard to ask this follow-up because Greg, you just answered how you might answer this question, but I'll start with Nick Knuth. If we need to have a staff, police officers on the Columbia Police Department staff that is fully staffed, every, not every, but I, I don't know of any law enforcement agencies right now who think that they have a lot of qualified candidates to fill vacancies. So how do we do that? And some will maybe answer, I'll anticipate higher salaries. And if we do higher salaries, are you, as a councilperson, supportive of putting that issue to a vote again? And if not, then what do we pay less for to pay police officers more?
There's a few questions in there.
Yeah. How do we staff, how do we get fully staffed?
So, you know, to your point, the obvious question, the first answer rather is always, you know, money. Money helps a lot of things. So we can always improve pay and that's true citywide in terms of staffing issues. But I think we need to make it a place where officers and, and up-and-coming peace officers, perhaps whether it's in training or just someone thinking about becoming one, wants to work. You know, nationwide, people don't want to be cops right now. And, and that's something that no one city, Columbia included, cannot, can't address by itself. But if we can work with our officers, with our community to make it a force, to make it a police force, a, a peace department where people are proud of it and respected, I think that would go a long way and that's not going to happen overnight. Again, kicking a dead horse, that's going to take everyone at the table, working together to say, how do we address this issue? How do we make this a place where people want to work, where they take pride in their work and they take pride in being a part in their role in this community?
Don Waterman, same question to you, getting fully staffed in the police department.
I think that, yes, recruiting is an issue, as Nick said. Right now, they're giving the sentiment, public sentiment, not a lot of people want to volunteer to become police officers. One of the things, again, on our Saturday briefing, Chief Jones mentioned that there is a, they're working with the Career Center to help the Columbia Career Center to develop a program. I don't know how effective that's been, how old it is, but I think that's one alternative. I think part of it is, if we can start working with the high school students or even younger to say, hey, police officer, it's a good profession, it's an honorable profession. It's not something to be scared of. Excuse me. So that's one way. Salaries, yes, that is something that is probably going to have to be addressed. As far as, do we have to go to a vote? It's possible. We may have to go to, go back to the people and say, okay, we need to, this is what we're going to need to fully staff the police department. Maybe, maybe the vote is specific for funding for the police department and EMS and fire, but police, policing seems to be the one place where there's a significant shortage. So do we have to go back there? And then if it does, if it doesn't pass, or if it has to, one we trim. I don't know enough details about the current budget to tell you specifically where we'd be.
Craig Bush, I, I want to respect what you said a moment ago and give you an opportunity to answer a different follow-up question. If you want to answer the question that the other two have, feel free to do so. My follow-up question to you would be, how do you create a neighborhood of cares for each other?
Like a choose-your-own-adventure, July, what page should I turn to?
I, I hope you do that one about neighborhoods because I think you're, I think you're passionate about that and you're saying, that is a solution, we need that, more than more people on the streets with, sort of, who have law enforcement badges. So how do we, how do we avoid that?
About, I will say about 15 years ago, I interviewed somebody by the name of Mel Duncan, who was a founder of the Nonviolent Peace Force. These are unarmed peacekeepers that go throughout the world in troubled areas and create and organize communities together. And it is not unheard of to have them actually solve the problem of warfare in an area. This is true. There was a civil war in Sri Lanka, I see faces like, oh my gosh, this is true. There was a civil war in Sri Lanka and the Nonviolent Peace Force organized, mostly it was women, mothers, who organized together and banded together and stopped a civil war, an ongoing hot sheeting war in Sri Lanka. How do we create community? By finding those connectors that exist in communities of people that know each other and are willing to learn about somebody. Finding those connectors that value diversity of all kinds, irrespective of how you dress, irrespective of what kind of hair you have, whether it's natural or unnatural, or any other kind of color hair that you have. That is how we create community. You know how to do this, it's been done. And I think we can trial and see.
We've got 30 seconds on this one, guys, so this is, I feel pretty fast. So this is kind of a yes or no question. It's a, again, about public safety, I like this question, I think we need to see where you feel, where you stand on this. I've not said, is it FUSUS? Is that how you pronounce it? It's, I, I only read it, but it's F-U-S-U-S. That was the system that was voted on in November by the city council. They, I believe, tabled at that time, there's some advice to me, that it will never come up again. Should the city council have approved the FUSUS camera system in November, which would have given, as I understand it, businesses the opportunity to get the police to opt-in, the police having real-time video of what was going on around their areas. And Nick, you're first on this one. 30 seconds.
I'll say, I do not have a yes or no to this. I think there was an incredible amount of misinformation and misunderstanding around this subject. And I myself felt victim to that, and I'm sure many folks did because of how much there was, both on social media and even in local media with those misunderstandings. And that goes back to, again, a fundamental issue with government in general is always communication is often lacking in terms of clarity and transparency. And so I think it's a, it's a very serious subject that deserves a very robust debate and perhaps this time it comes back up, one with more transparency and clarity for all involved. And again, starting with a foundation of ensuring everybody has a seat at the table because it, it's a sensitive subject and it deserves, I assume diligence.
And Don Waterman, your answer about FUSUS, whether it should be approved or not?
My initial reaction is actually to say not. It's more, for me, it's more of a privacy issue. The idea of somebody watching me when I'm walking down the street, I don't really even call them, but just, it makes me uncomfortable. I know that there could be arguments for it, but from a purely privacy standpoint, I would say no.
Greg Bush?
Uh, no. I can extend on that.
You've got 30 seconds.
Very good.
Very good.
If we needed to have cameras that existed in our town, I want them around public buildings and I want them around our electrical substations and that sort of thing. Those are the kinds of places that I would want cameras outside police station and finding any, any sort of public building, but not private businesses.
Okay. Don Waterman, first for you on this one. The city is taking steps to use ARPA money to build a $15 million homeless shelter, but only has two years for funding operations. How do you think the shelter affects homelessness and how can the city fund the shelter long-term?
From what I have been able to gather about the shelter, it's also going to be done in conjunction with, I believe it's a voluntary action center that is going to be assisting with it. The fact that the ARPA funds gives, provides two years of operations frankly illustrates the risk that comes with building something like this off of a grant. The grant can end or the funds can run out. It's not local, but you know, we've all been talking about the debt ceiling, one of these days, maybe Congress will decide to try to live within their means. However, anyway, I digress. So I think, but the answer that I, building the shelter is great. It shows the heart is in the right place. We care, we want to do something. Is setting it up, running it for two years and then closing the doors, doing something effective. If we, if it is done in conjunction with the voluntary action center where we can get funds, private donations, private fundraising, then I think that's a great thing. And certainly something worth looking into. The other issue, and I don't think anybody really wants to admit it, but if we build a facility, even if it's large enough to house the entire homeless community, there's going to be someone who opts to sleep outside. Plain and simple. Somebody is going to say, I don't care, I don't want to be in that building sleeping outside. So it's not going to eliminate the problem. Help, yes, but it's not going to eliminate.
I'll just go ahead and follow up because I wanted to ask all of you this, but you gave me the opportunity of 30 second follow-up. So what do we do about homelessness and especially people who choose to live there but become disruptors to those that don't want them hanging out where they're hanging out? Well, I'm thinking about downtown near the Or Street Studios and things of that nature. Let's say that I choose, I don't want to be in that shelter. I'm going to live on the street and I'm going to continue to live there until somebody carries me away. What do we do about that? How do we deal with that? If at all?
That's challenged because if they're on a private, private business, you know, then it's trespass. If it's public, maybe not trespass. I don't have an exact solution. The easy solution would be to say, have the police pick them up and lock them up, but our jails have become our repository for mental health. Is it a matter of getting them, hospitalizing them short-term to get them some sort of treatment, maybe on some medication? I don't know. That's a very difficult question. I don't have a good answer for it at the moment.
Greg Bush, we go to you. Again, the original question is, the city is taking steps to use ARPA money to build a $15 million homeless shelter. It has two years of funding for that. How do you think a shelter affects homelessness and how can the city fund the shelter long-term?
Well, there's two different kinds of like homelessness or being unhoused, right? There's an acute condition and then a chronic condition. I will suggest that a facility could, might very well be an investment into our community of somebody who maybe got down on their luck, maybe had some health problems, maybe lost their home, maybe lost their job. That is an investment in them, that they now have a place where they can be cleaned, they have an address to where they can, from where they can send, you know, resumes out or it's all electronic now, but they can be, they can get food, they can get water. These are the kinds of things that we can do as an investment in our community. That's, so when you do an investment and you only have this two-year time, two-year time horizon, right? When you make that investment, that funding might end at the end of two years, but the investments that you've made in our community of helpers, we can find a way to continue to help these people.
I'll give you a chance to follow up if you want to on the overall issue of homelessness or being without shelter. People choose sometimes to live there, but it makes some in the public uncomfortable that they choose to be outside and unsheltered. What would you say in those conditions, how do we deal with that?
Well, let's look inward as to why somebody is uncomfortable with that. I mean, this is my neighbor. Whether they have a house or an address or not, they're still my neighbor. So how would I, how would I solve that problem? I don't really see it as a problem. Somebody might be uncomfortable, sometimes I'm, I mean, I'm uncomfortable right now. My heart is beating like, well, just telling me that I need to take a break. My heart's beating for that. I don't remember America. So that doesn't, that doesn't actually solve the problem. There is, I, I kind of like take issue with the premise of somebody who chooses to sleep outside. I don't think anybody would choose to be freezing. I don't think anybody would choose to be hungry.
Let me clarify, clarify that for a while. You drive down by Cafe Berlin and you would see someone that was taking up residence on the sidewalk there. For a while, when I was downtown, around the corner, on whatever numbered street it is, on the edge of Williams downtown, there was someone who took up residence next to the newspaper dispensers there. I, I think it's, it's, it's troubling to know someone has to or chooses to do that. I think it, it makes us uncomfortable as a society to do that. How do we solve that issue? I know this is a really hard question that deserves more than 30 seconds, but that's not all you've got.
I mean, every human being is with dignity, is inherent dignity. Right? In the Bible, they talk about how when you take, you know, the weed for the edges for the poor, the poor will always be among that. They're still my neighbor.
Okay.
Do you repeat the original question?
Yeah. The city is taking steps to use ARPA money to build a $15 million homeless shelter, but only has two years for funding operations. How do you think the shelter affects homelessness and how can the city fund the shelter long-term? Two questions.
Yeah, so I think it helps, you know, it's another tool in the toolbox, an expensive one at that, no doubt. And in terms of the city's fundraising or rather sorry, the funding of it, you know, the city shouldn't be the only funder of it. Can it be a partner as it is with a lot, with a lot of nonprofit projects? Absolutely. The city has a place in that. But there's a reason why the opportunity campus has, I think it's, there's a half dozen nonprofits working in tandem to provide services and, and to get that up and going. I also want to touch on, and this perhaps leads to the follow-up question you've been asking. This is homelessness on shelter, whatever you want to label it, is a symptom of, of a larger issue, right? We're just addressing a symptom. And really what it goes back to is a whole wide variety of things, whether it's workforce development, mental health, domestic violence. I mean, again, you can go all the way back to the beginning, it's an early childhood learning and the lack of resources there. It all trickles down and, and opportunity campus and all of our efforts are addressing the symptom and not the cause. They tried to address the cause and many of these, and again, that's why there's so many nonprofits partnering together for this opportunity campus to help, you know, turn those acute or otherwise homeless or unsheltered populations into permanently housed individuals and rather productive members of our community. But they can only do so much. And again, we're, we're looking at a symptom and not the cause.
You want any additional time? I've given it to the other two, I don't, but your opponent's not here, so you can get that back. That's what Greg Bush. There's been some concern in the community regarding board and commission appointments over the past few years. How can the city? How can the city attract more qualified people to boards and commissions?
Well, they're, we're a community of helpers. Let's find those connections between people who help. We have, we have a whole school of people who study the right ways to do things, right? And when you learn more, you do better. And boards and commissions, you are known by your recruits, right? So when we have a strong, robust local economy, we will continue to attract people to our community. And those helpers, those community members will be elected, not elected, but appointed to serve. Make it an attractive offer. You get to be a part of the fourth largest city in the state of Missouri and make a better future for everyone. That's pretty attractive to me. So how can we attract them? I mean, sell the sizzle, right? We're Columbia.
Nick, same question to you. How can the city attract more qualified people to boards and commissions?
Make it worth doing. There are too many boards and commissions and council and staff are aware of this. Kind of dragged on past their intended purpose. So we need to cut out ones that are归blin, sort of no purpose anymore and make the ones that are useful, that sort of very direct purpose. As an example, like everything, planning zoning to how the community developments are very, very important purposes. But there's a lot of in between that doesn't. And so we need to make it worthwhile. And one way to do that is making the work of those commissioners, of those board members in some cases, actually meaningful because sometimes, and this may surprise people, but that board or commission will make a suggestion to council and it means nothing. And council should, if they're actively recruiting, as they should be to these board or commissions, take those, the advice and the recommendations of those boards and commissions that they appointed and created more seriously.
Donald Waterman, your response to how can the city attract more qualified people to boards and commissions?
I think part of it is actually kind of combining what both Nick and Greg have said is sell the sizzle. Make it aware, make people aware of it. How many, just a broad rhetorical question because I don't have time to do it, but how many of us know how many boards and commissions need to be staffed? I don't think there's anybody in this room knows the answer to that question. Because there are a lot of them and as Nick said, some may have outlived their usefulness and need to be disposed of. Some can maybe combined, but then make it attractive. Make it so that, yes, you're making a difference. You're making a difference in Columbia. This is your town. So advertise it, get it out there. This is an opportunity. You know, we always talk about pay for teachers and police officers, fire or EMS. Maybe we need to do something about a small stipend. I know recently they started issuing a small stipend for council members. Ten years ago, six years ago, they didn't have that. So maybe a small stipend to serve on the board. I know I was a member of the mental health task force that the county put together. And to be honest, I was a little disappointed in it. It was put together to do a survey, do a study associated with the county jail. And then they were keeping it going. But a lot of the meetings that I went to, they, they bring in somebody that talked about mental health, but not so much how it affected Boone County in Columbia. So is that one that maybe doesn't need to exist?
I wanted to ask a quick follow up, thirty seconds. We'll start with Greg Bush and I need to be educated on this. Are you aware of how members of boards and commissions are chosen? Are they at the whim of a mayor to too much of a degree? And should council people have more of a say in that?
I was told there'd be no man.
It's just, who's got the, who's got the power to say, yes, this person would make a good commission member?
Yeah, so the way that it's been described to me and I've seen is that there are, there are recommendations that are made. And I really want to speak more intelligently about this and I'll just have to educate myself to speak more intelligently.
I appreciate that. And Nick Kenote, do you have any comment on that? How, how this goes about and how it comes down? There have been some stories within the last few years of mayors who have decided, I don't like this roster of candidates. We will not proceed.
So a couple of things there. So there are commissions and task forces and board where the mayor does have the right to make that appointment unilaterally. Traditionally, they still look for approval from their council members, but that's more of a, again, a tradition than it is required by these. The vast majority of the commissions require four sevenths of the, or four ninths of the council to approve somebody to that commission or board or what it may be. And to David's point of, you know, sometimes the higher slates are ignored. That does occur and oftentimes in my experience, it's because of a lack of qualification. Because again, there are certain boards that do require a level of experience, given their topics such as water and light, where perhaps you want somebody with an engineering background or something relevant to the subject material. And in those cases, they will, reasonably so, say, we need to search for more people and do a better job of recruiting and advertising it.
Donald Waterman, same question.
Well, from my, from my experience, albeit limited, but part of it is also an application process. You know, the individual has to, there's a form for the various board or commission. Yes, there are qualifications for some of the boards. So they, they list those qualifications, their other interests, what else might make them interested in it? I don't know how many of them are strictly filled on a solicitation basis. But again, I know there's commonly, you'll see a note, local political organizations will say, hey, these boards and commissions are now seeking or have vacancies. You know, if you're interested, you know, here's how you apply. And then, yes, then it's voted on by the appropriate organization for whatever board or commission.
We're going to go to another question. Nick, you're first on this one. What do you think the role of a city council person should be?
To be representative of their ward. Personal thoughts. A council member should be engaged and present in their ward more often than they're not. They should be available to attend the formal informal gatherings of their voters and of their community leaders, whether it's church or nonprofit or business. They're just there to, in my, permanently be a sponge, like to soak up any information about their ward, their concerns, the challenges and opportunities. And to suit to the best of their ability act on that and to represent their ward as a, you know, one sixth of the city council for the ward.
Donald Waterman, same question. What do you think the role of a city council person should be?
As Nick said, to fold, to represent their ward. I think that is their primary focus, but also recognizing that they are, as he said, one sixth of a body that works to make Columbia as a whole better. Answer questions, get, you know, address various issues, whether it's fire, safety, fire, EMS, police, is it infrastructure? Is it trash collection, you know, facilities, roads? So we, we're part of, and we have to work together for all of Columbia. And yes, we represent the entire ward regardless of whether we agree with everybody or we disagree. And people, we're going to disagree with roughly half of the people in the ward. So we have to represent all of them, but the list of them. I think that was a great line, Nick, about just being a sponge, just listening is very important.
And Greg Bush, what do you think the role of a city council person should be?
To be an advocate for your ward, to be an advocate for people that may not have a voice and to ensure the promise of Columbia for today, tomorrow, and into the next decade. That's the role. It's going to be my, if I'm chosen as the next Ward Five City Councilman, it will be my votes that create a future for Columbia, that create a future for Ward Five. You know, it's, it's quite a thing that we have these wards and we have to live in the wards and do all the things in the wards. And what that shows is we are tying our fates together. That which befalls my neighbor befalls me as well. So as a council person, my role is to be the, that neighbor. I know it sounds a little Mr. Rogers-y, but we're a community. And I have to advocate for my neighbors for my own heart. Be able to look my, with my family in the eye at the end of the day and know that I really try to make sure that the promise of Columbia is concerned.
This is another question that the board provided. The question of residency for city council members has come up a few times. Do you think there should be stricter residency requirements for city council members? I am not familiar with this particular part of the city governments, but Donald Waterman, we'll start with you. Your thoughts on being tied in and residency?
I think it's critically important that the council person for that ward live in the ward. To my understanding, I'm not sure exactly what you meant by making it stricter because my understanding, it's kind of a yes or no issue.
Greg Bush, any comment on this particular question?
Well, I can say unequivocally that if I'm elected Ward Five, I will not take my residence to the Virginia suburbs of Washington, D.C. Stay in Ward Five.
Nick Kenote?
Yeah, I figure absolutely needs to be that residency requirement is, I think that's current status is satisfactory. You know, it's important as I answered the previous question about the role of someone. It's vital to be physically present in your ward more often than not and to be available when as much as possible. And you certainly couldn't do that as easily if you didn't, if you didn't live here.
I'm going to start with Greg Bush on this one, and this surprised me when I saw this question. There hasn't been a performance review of a city manager since 2014. What do you think the role of the city council should be when evaluating a city manager? What role does the city council, city manager?
I, crucial, the role of the city council is crucial to reviewing the city manager. I didn't know that actually, that that hadn't happened. Look, where I work, I get reviewed actually monthly. We set goals monthly and we have quarterly goals and yearly goals. That, this hasn't happened to a city manager or to some is, I think Columbia can do better than that. And our role is going to be, we are the ones that hold account because we are the ones on the dais. We are the ones who, our neighbors see our faces and it's our names that are on the votes. We need to have a review.
City council has, what evaluating a city manager?
Yeah, it's enormous. I mean, objectively, the city manager is the only employee that city council has. That is the only person who answers to them and them alone. So, you know, whether you're a police officer or a front desk attendant or the city manager, accountability is a must in government. And I think it is imperative that council holds an annual review to, you know, whether it's to reward them for their good efforts or to do the opposite. That is just, that's good government and that's good policy. It benefits everyone.
Donald Waterman, same question.
I'm surprised it has been nine years since we've had a performance review for the city manager. And I absolutely agree that it needs to be done. I don't think I've worked at any place in the village since I left the farm that I didn't have at least an annual performance review. I've got a lot of years of work under my belt, so I think that it should be done. The city council is the one that hires the city manager. So they are responsible for his or her actions and they are accountable to the city council. So yes, the city council, if they haven't done it, quite frankly, I think they're being witnessed.
Next question, I'm going to start with Nick Kenote. What do you anticipate would be most rewarding about being on the council?
Being able to help people, big and small. There's a lot of challenges people face in this community. And it can be as small as someone reaching out to you as a common person saying, who do I need to talk to about a trash issue? Or something much larger when it comes to having an issue with, you know, water and lights in my house or something. Being able to help people, at the end of the day, I think is both most rewarding part of serving in a public office and perhaps the most important one in terms of that is what folks are expecting from you when they elect you is your ability to deliver for them. And, you know, that goes back to ensuring that you're listening to them when it comes time for that.
Follow up for you before I move on to Don. And I think it was Don that said a while ago, or somebody said that decisions you would make, probably going to be half the people, or might have been Greg's, not going to agree with the decision that you made. So how do you handle that? You make a decision about trash collection that I think is a terribly wrong decision. How are you going to, how are you going to appease me or help me to understand why I'm not going to be satisfied on that?
Yeah, that goes, I mean, the foundation of that is communication. I think at the end of the day, all you can do is communicate as clearly and broadly to folks, through every medium possible, from Facebook to your city email to TikTok, if that's what people want. And to communicate like, this is the vote I took, this is why I took it. And this is what influenced those, that decision. And again, going back to, you know, to listen. You need to listen to them just as much as they want an answer from you. They want you to listen to them when they have an issue with what you've done. And that's not always the case.
I'll go to Donald Waterman on this. What do you anticipate would be most rewarding about being on the council?
I think it's having impact on the ward, but also the city of Columbia. Being able to help people, as Nick said, nothing more satisfying than somebody comes to you with an issue and you can, you know, resolve it for them or point them in the right direction to get their answer that they need or get the. So that's, I think that's the biggest thing for me. It's just an opportunity to serve. There's a lot that goes on and I know I'm learning a lot just going through this process of just what all the city council does and is responsible for. You kind of have an idea of the big picture, but then, you know, issues come up, whether it's trash or whatever. But issues come up and it catches all the headlines and you think that's all the city council has to do. No, there's a lot more to it. So, but just having an impact and having some input on Columbia is probably going to be the reward that I receive.
I'll follow up with a question I followed up with Nick, and that is, when a good portion of the people you represent don't like what you just chose, what do you do?
I think Nick nailed it. It's communication. It's saying, look, this is, these are the factors that I consider and this is why I voted the way I did. You know, I appreciate your input and thank you and I welcome it. We can continue to talk about it. The one thing that we have to watch today is we have become so confrontational when it comes to disagreeing. So back away, make sure that we can disagree and agree to disagree. But I think, again, communicate why you made the decision that you did, I think will go a long way.
Greg Bush, what do you anticipate would be most rewarding about being on the council?
To be an advocate. And again, this is, I'll give you all first semester nursing school, but there's a nursing diagnosis that we use and there's a process that we use called IBSS diagnose, plan, implement and evaluate. And that's the kind of thing that I would bring to Ward Five, to the city of Columbia as a nurse. That is the, one of the things that I have found rewarding in my vocation. I do not see that stopping if I was lucky enough to become the representative of Ward Five.
And then you would resolve issues of disagreement with constituents, how?
Well, it depends on if they're persuadable or not. Look, I'm a husband and a father. Sometimes I shut off the wifi on the kids. That is something they do not like, that they have to do their homework or they have this other things that they need to do. So sometimes there's difficult things that need to be done. If someone is persuadable, then I can, I could try to persuade them. If they are not persuadable and they need to vent, I have been a supervisor and on a very active floor of a hospital. If they're not persuadable, then you just kind of let them vent. But if they are persuadable, then I can walk them through my decisions. The decisions don't come willy nilly. They don't come just, you know, at a whim. So, but I understand and I guess.
These candidates probably feel like they've been up here for like four or five hours. They haven't, but we are nearing the end of our time that we've asked them to give us. Do you have questions from the audience? And there's a microphone right there, so use that mid aisle microphone. And we've got four or five minutes for questions. I think that would be best to do that because that probably is tapped into our sleeping.
I just want to pay you back on Mr. Bush's.
I just want to pay you back on Mr. Bush's last response and maybe get all of you to respond. Are you in fact persuadable? Oftentimes a council. Vote and then learn more information after the vote and the issue will come up again a year or two down the road. Are you persuadable and can you change your position based on new information?
That question, we'll start with Don Waterman on this one.
Answer is yes. You know, I have changed my position on things given additional information. The issue, one of the things that I'm talking about and that's was an issue with the fifth ward was several years ago, there was some talk about a new transmission line, above ground transmission line that was tabled. And I had forgotten about it until somebody mentioned it a short time ago. Had the opportunity to talk with Matt Pitzer, the incumbent, and we discussed it and I asked him about it. And he said basically that there were, they went back, they looked and they found some other options without having to put in the transmission line, but to provide the power. I think that's great. That's one of the things that I want to try and do when I'm with the council is, yes, I like consensus if we can get it. We can agree to disagree, okay, that may happen. But I like consensus. And to answer your question simply, yes, I can change one line when I have provided additional good information.
Greg Bush, the question is, are you persuadable?
I am persuadable. There are a handful of things that I can be persuaded on, some things I cannot. There are places in the state and in the country that don't like the kind of marriage that my wife and I have because she is not white and I am. I will not be persuaded on things of civil rights, on transmission lines. I can gain new information and I can be persuaded, but let's be clear about what it is somebody's trying to persuade me to do.
Nick Cano, how about you?
Absolutely. This makes, this might surprise people, but I am not an expert in all things. You know, at Realtor Forum, I am not a Realtor and I do not have that expertise. And once again, going back to my point of having everyone at the table, this city still, as the board commissions or otherwise, with people who are experts on topics and it's important to listen to them and nothing else to learn because the world and information is ever changing. And I do want to take this opportunity to say, I thought about this about the last follow-up question. I think just as important as communicating your reasoning for something or being willing to change your mind is being willing to take responsibility when you made a mistake and maybe made a bad vote. There's no elected representative, local, state, or federal who at some point probably hasn't done that. And I think it's important to take responsibility because not only is that the right thing to do, but I think it proves the point that that's good government. We all are human, make mistakes. And if more people, especially in our record offices, would have been meant when that occurred, we'd all be better off for it.
Other question from the crowd here, just step up to the microphone and we'll start with Greg Bush on answering this next question.
Yes, I'd like to ask the question about accessibility, so that members who live in the community can be able to contact their city council reps. Now, of course, there's an email address which will be assigned if you get elected. So you can always email a person. But beyond that, do you have any intentions of perhaps running office hours on a regular basis so that people can meet with you face to face and so that you can get their input? Because some city council members do run office hours and other city council members do not run office hours. Are you willing to do that?
Greg Bush, you get first on this one.
Yes, absolutely. Being able to have an accessibility, sure. I'd like to know when those are and like to publish them in advance, like for people, to make sure that they can, look, if I'm representing you, I don't know if you're Ward Five or Ward Maybe or Ward Anywhere, but.
You don't have to answer that.
But absolutely, and you're right, not everybody, not everybody has the same ability to use a computer. Not everybody has the same ability to use the telephone in the same way. Then not everybody can go up and downstairs easily. So those kinds of things, let's be mindful of the kind of barriers we erect around ourselves to make sure that we can still be a representative and a voice of people.
Right, and I probably should clarify a little bit about office hours. The ones that do offer office hours usually have them like after the city council agenda has come out, which is generally, it should be out on a Thursday before the council meeting, and then it's council Monday after that. So it's in that in-between time, usually on the weekend in between when people are off work. Then they can come at like a coffee shop or something like that and meet face to face and talk about the decisions that might be on the city council agenda then. Because one of the problems that happens with city council meetings is when they get to public comment, you're limited to only three minutes. And that can get kind of tough if you have quite a bit of information to be able to provide to your council members and it's hard to put all of that in a massive email, right? That's what I'm getting at with the questions.
Nick Cano, accessibility as a councilperson to your constituents?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's incumbent upon council members to be predictably available, whether it's having office hours, which I will actually regularly, because and in person as well is online, because in my opinion, advocating and representing our community cannot only take place online or via Zoom. You need to be present and available, not only predictably in terms of office hours and some things happening in your ward. And one of the ideas I've had that I would like to see if I am fortunately elected is to have periodic and reoccurring town halls, so to speak, within my ward that change locations so I can reach different pockets of the community.
Don Waterman, Waterman saying please?
Oh, I think it's absolutely imperative that you have the office hours or means of being in the community, in the ward, so that you can meet face to face with your constituents. An idea that I've got, I simply call it five for the fifth, is maybe one Saturday a month, maybe after the agenda's published before the next council meeting, coffee shop or two that I maybe rotate around. And, you know, nine to noon, I'm going to be at such and such and come see me and be there, you know, third Saturday of every month or whatever it is. But just a regular place where people can come and no one's going to be there. Come see me, come talk to me, tell me what we're doing good, tell me what we're not doing good, tell me your concerns, tell me the name of your favorite poodle, whatever it might be.
Before we go to another question, I just, it came to me as I was hearing the answers to this, and I'm not a candidate nor will I probably ever be a candidate, but candidates go door to door in their campaign. How about after getting elected, going door to door to ask? Because I know I had a councilperson that had regular meetings at a coffee shop, I never went, but it would have been interesting to have had that person. Sorry, I don't mean to add more work, but if you really want to reach out to people, and I'm not saying just these candidates, I think going door to door after an election is as important as going door to door before an election, but that's just my own personal. All right, we'll do, I think, two more questions here.
So thank you all for running. Take care on a lot. There's so many issues being a councilperson, you know, the environment, safety issues, dealing with the state responding to Columbia. But here's an issue that came to my attention recently, and I feel like the city could have a role in this. We had a Christmas parade in Columbia and because of COVID, maybe this was the first one we've had in a while, or the second one. KRPN had a parade the year before. It was called a holiday parade. But this year we had a Christmas parade because the people that put it on wanted a Christmas parade. But as a person who is not Christian, I really, I mean, I love Christmas, but I think I'm a lot more comfortable with our community having a holiday parade. And I think this is something the city parks and recs department could possibly look into sponsoring. In years past, we sponsored a ton of things, Thursday nights downtown, many, many things. But maybe there's a role for the city in something like this. So I was just going to put that plug in there.
Interesting question that has to do, a bigger part of that is inclusivity, I believe. And so that is an interesting question tied to the Christmas parade. Nick Cano first on this.
First of all, always in favor of more parade. Lots walking in them, not, definitely not selling candy to kids, you're not supposed to do that, but we'll be. I think it's a great idea if the city parks and recs, this park recreation commission, that this would be a great place to start that conversation. But in terms of, you know, the private events that have occurred from the, there was a Salvation Army hosted it this past time and then the one with KRPN, you know, any item that's, they even describe it, you know, folks are free to label it as they please. But in terms of what the city does, especially if the city is the main sponsor of it, is being recommended, I think it's important to, you know, be as inclusive as possible, keeping in mind the fact that during the holiday season, there are a wide variety of holidays occurring and we can all come out to celebrate all those holidays. So if the city does it, I think there's a good point to be made for it being a holiday parade in terms of being as inclusive as possible.
Don Waterman, the same question?
No, I think community activities, citywide activities like that, I think are a great thing. As far as naming it, I like the idea of maybe a suggestion, maybe on a rotating basis. Maybe this year we call it a holiday parade. Next year we call it a Christmas parade. Maybe the year after that a Kwanzaa parade, maybe a Hanukkah parade after that. And I'm sure there's another one in there that I've forgotten or don't know about. You know, that's one way, and again, to the point about inclusivity, to simply call it a holiday parade every year, then are we excluding the people that prefer Christmas, the term Christmas, rather than simply holiday? You know, there is a significant, you know, a significant number of churches in our town and they're going, I think we prefer to hear referred to as, you know, the Christmas. So, but again, to be inclusive, maybe we rotate, okay? And I understand some people are adamantly against Christmas or using the term Christmas, I should say. So, and I understand that. So there's a solution in there, or maybe multiple parades.
Greg Bush?
Christmas is a holiday. And if we're going to have a parade and you want to be a part of a parade, you shouldn't be excluded through naming. So I don't believe in a rotation. I believe in a holiday parade to make sure that anyone who comes out, who come out, celebrate for a holiday and be a part of the community, is better in the community. Particularly if it's sponsored by the city with public dollars. Nobody should be excluded.
All right.
Thanks, thanks all for coming. So homelessness is probably the biggest human policymakers right now. And we've mainly been focusing on centralizing our solution to it with this new opportunity center. In the interim, however, and I think this is probably going to be, it's just going to continue, you have a more diffuse group of homeless people around the city. And particularly in the first ward, we're seeing some fallout from this that isn't just about neighborly intrusion. It's real physical issues. For one, a rise in blatant, flat-out trespassing on private residential property. This isn't business property, it's residential. Two, a rise of door-to-door foot traffic, hard narcotics sales, methamphetamine, fentanyl, you name it, it's out there. The third thing is squatting in private properties. Real estate agents have to deal with this with listings. Property managers and housing providers who provide rents have to deal with it between vacancies, people move out, you're now a area swatters moving in. And the fourth thing is a weird new phenomenon that you can actually see, I'll tell you where to look at this. It's what I call the pop-up landfill where a homeless encampment will vacate and they will leave a tremendous amount of trash, whether it's in a home they've squatted in or whether it's on public property where they've actually been camping. You can see one of these on the railroad tracks going across, I think it's Wilkes Boulevard, go across college, go across those railroad tracks that head to Paris Road and look over to your right and you'll see. And the city has posted this to get it cleaned up. Because the city contracts with homelessness service providers, what kinds of things could the city do? And there are contracts with, you know, churches and AAA change, et cetera, where they work directly with these populations. What can we do to come in after this kind of fallout and get it cleaned up and really prevent what is, which health crisis if we don't take care of it? And those four things are just really some examples. But what do we do about the fallout that's more diffuse and not as centralized as, say, this opportunity center we're talking about? Does any of that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Don Waterman, you get first crack at this. Sorry.
All tough issues. And I don't know that there is a simple solution. Some of it, maybe as far as the cleanup goes, and when you say the fallout, I'm assuming you're, I'm taking it that you're talking about primarily the cleanup afterwards.
Well, the ongoing, you know.
About, yeah, squatters.
Okay.
Drug.
The issue is whole, okay. Squatting, again, if it's private property, then I think that that is a criminal matter and the individuals need to be handled appropriately. The cleanup afterwards, whether it's the city, the contract, volunteers, variety of issues there. But I think when we're talking, you know, door to door, if you're talking about the drug trafficking, again, a criminal issue. And it kind of goes back to, do we need more, is that a reason where we need more police? Or, but I'm going to say it's a criminal issue and that's how it should be dealt with.
Greg Bush?
So part of what I think you're asking is a little bit by absentee ownership, right? There's private property, there is no owners around.
No.
It's not what you're asking.
Okay, okay. This is about actively owned properties where they're vacant in the interim or when you have a place that is vacant where you have an owner who lives in town and monitors, especially a retired person who may be leaving it vacant because they want to renovate it or something, and squatters move in and the damage then compounds. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because the city contracts with service providers in the homeless community, vote for public and private property. And I'm wanting to know if there's some innovative ways that we can help private property owners as well as our public properties that are now also suffering from this sort of, you know, pop-up landfill syndrome and, you know, onsite drug abuse.
So there you go.
Okay. I don't think we should criminalize poverty. I don't think we should criminalize desperation. And we definitely should not be criminalizing addiction. All of those things are public health and public safety issues. So there's a lot to unpack there in a forum where you get 30 seconds to respond after the fact, like the same thing kind of happens after, you know, football games, there's a lot of detrius afterwards. And what happens, the fraternities and other people come around and perform community service along those things. So I'm not necessarily familiar with exactly what you're talking about. I mean, you kind of gave the geography, but I don't believe that addiction is a criminal justice issue. I don't believe that it's a public health issue.
Nick Cano, your thoughts on this type of subject?
Yeah, it's definitely, you know, an unfortunate issue, but I do agree with Greg that, you know, criminalizing a lot of those acts is not going to solve anything. It might solve it in that moment, so to speak, in terms of removing the individual or the vacancy or whatever it may be. But I think it would prove us to invest more in supplementary services to our police department and our fire. You know, we have community service aides that, to me, this sounds like a wonderful thing for them to help address, whether it's to help with somebody squatting or things of that nature. But criminalizing is only compounding the issue and frankly wasting very valuable public safety resources that are already stretched and shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't stretch anymore. Yeah.
My guess is this issue will continue to come up at forums. Did you have a question? Is it really brief? Because if not, we're going to pull the plug.
Okay, I'll make it super brief. I was really surprised to have boards and commissions, that question come up at all and talking about getting qualified members, while having been on a board and commission. been on a boarding commission, I can tell you, you don't keep qualified members because the city does not listen to them. And all the work that gets put in is just ignored. You talked about seconds, how much is free parking when you're serving the city? Would you be willing to push the city to listen to those experts that are volunteering at times? And how far would you be willing to push them?
Yeah, makes it go back to something that I think was, kind of make it worth the while, make it something that is seen as valuable to serve on these commissions. Let's see, who's turn it is to go first, I believe. It is Nick.
Yeah, I think I, someone answered this question earlier. It is an issue and we need to listen. And with the point of appointing and recruiting these experts or caring citizens on these topics, if we're not going to take them seriously when they provide the feedback that they are by statute of their commission expected to get. You know, as somebody who's served on over half dozen of these commissions, I can feel the pain of the free parking element. But, you know, it is the little things, but it's also the big thing of utilizing these commissions and in terms of where that line is drawn. You know, I think you have to balance the feedback you get from commission and board members with the feedback you get from city staff, with the feedback that you get from your average citizen, whether that be someone in your support or perhaps outside expertise on whatever the subject. And it's a balance, a bit of a thing.
Don Waterman, will you place value on what commission and board members tell the council?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that's probably the reason the board commission was established in the first place. Some of it by statute. So yes, I think they absolutely should be considering it. And if it's become a habit that it's automatically dismissed, then no, I don't think that's appropriate. It should be, should be listened to. And certainly put in the, put on the plate, put in the pot, however you want to, when you gather the information to make a decision. Some of them, because of the expertise that is required for the board of commission, then yeah, that should, that should probably carry the most weight.
Greg Bush, just relax on this.
Yes, not all council is the same, right? There are people who, you know, teach or we trust our physicians, we trust our surgeons, we trust this. So when a council or when a board and commission is making a recommendation based upon what they think is the best issue, that should carry more weight with a counselor. And I also hear about the frustration of making recommendations and then just being irrelevant, being deemed irrelevant after all of the work that you do. So I'm sorry that happened to you. I'm sure you're, again, said you're not the only one who delivered, and I'll yield that in time.
You've got time now, because I'm coming right back to you. A final comment of anything you'd like to say to wrap up your presentation tonight in 60 seconds or less.
60 seconds or less. Thank you all for having us. In the opening, I showed a little bit of my CV. And I want to tell you why I'm running. Three things that are most important to me are public safety, affordable housing, and workforce development. Columbia is a unique gem. And there are people who would want Columbia to look like everywhere else in the state. I think Columbia can be better than some of the other places in the state. There's not everywhere, like I said before, is a place where my wife and I could live our lives like this. I believe in Columbia values. The city council just reaffirmed what community means, and I read those things again, and I had it bookmarked because I believe in the promise of Columbia. I believe in the community of Columbia, and I believe in a local, resilient economy. And I hope that I'm going to vote for all of Ward Five as much as I can. And I hope that I'm worthy of somebody coming out of their house and voting for me on the board. Don Waterman, please.
Thank you, David, and to all the board of Realtors and to all of you for sticking around. So thank you for the questions. I'm running because I want to see Columbia continue to grow, develop. You know, when I came here 20 years ago, it was a, it's a vibrant city. And I think that there have been some hiccups, but I think it still is a vibrant city. I think every city has places and things we can do better, and some things we do well. So continue to do the things we do well, and let's take a look at things we can do better. And yes, April 4th, regardless of who you vote for, get out of there.
And finally, Nick Cano.
I'll echo the thanks for the board of Realtors and David for coming out of retirement for one more night. The challenges facing the first ward, our neighborhoods and the community at large are complicated. We're never going to make progress on them, however, unless we work together, specifically across ideological and socioeconomic divides that are inherent in our community as they are in any other. There is enough obstructionism and failure to address issues at the national level. Let's not permit that on city council. While there is no shortage of issues that need to be addressed, the top issues that I am focusing on, given what I have heard from those in the first ward as I have gone door to door, are ensuring equitable access to our resources and opportunities, improving our sidewalks and the safety of our cyclists and veterans, investing in critical sewer and wastewater projects, specifically in the first ward, expanding and involving the resources available to our unsheltered, nest-attrapass populations, and addressing the affordable housing shortage. Several of these topics, I was happy to hear us discuss this tonight. I want to say and really stress this, that I am not running or speaking about these topics to give lip service in the hopes of something else. I am running because I love Columbia. I love the first ward. It's where my wife and I have chosen to live and chosen to be a part of. And as somebody, again, who came from a rather impoverished background, I am very conscious of the success that I have experienced and why I have experienced it. And government played no small part in that, as I tell people, rather than viewing it as a bootstrapping, rather, I am the product of government support. Everything from free meals at school and public education to federal grants that provided my higher education opportunities. And so government is impactful. It can do great things, and I believe that very firmly. And that is why I'm running for the first ward city council seat.
This is a good initial opportunity to get to learn about these candidates. There will be more. I hope that you will tell other people to get involved in the situations that will come up where we vote for people who have a direct impact on the life that we have around us here in this community. Greg Bush, Don Waterman, Ward Five, Nick Cano, Pat Fowler, who's not here, at Ward One, will be on the April 4th ballot. Board of Realtors, thank you so much for traditionally kicking off our forum season with this opportunity. And thank all of you who were here, who participated tonight, and those of you who are watching via remote opportunities. Thank you and good night.